The event was hosted by the nonprofit Coro Southern California, the Secretary of State's office, the LA City Controller, and Nation Builder. Pot is now legal in California, but not if you're driving. The LAPD wants to make that clear with some jolting reminders of the consequences. Gil Reyes has more from Valley Traffic Division in Panorama City. Gil?
Yes, Yana, just take a look at the example right behind me. With the sales of recreational marijuana now legal across California, the LAPD wants to send a message not only on the dangers of drinking and driving, but also the dangers of driving while high. And these messages are particularly targeted towards young people.
The LAPD hopes this is a sobering reminder of what can happen when you mix alcohol and pot while driving. Police say the driver of this car was killed in a crash on Sherman Way late last year.
Somebody who's driving impaired is gonna lose their concentration, their coordination.
Detective William Bustos warning drivers on National Drug and Alcohol Facts Week. The warning comes on the first month of legal marijuana sales in California. Now, it's too early to tell if legalizing cannabis will increase vehicle accidents locally, but we can show statistics from other parts of the country. Colorado, Oregon, and Washington State all legalized pot for recreational use a few years back. In comparison to neighboring states where pot is not legal, accident claims increased 14% in Colorado, 6% in Washington State, and also jumped 4% in Oregon. That's according to the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety.
It's more prevalent now, especially with certain things like you can just call and get these drugs and not...
16-year-old Jasmine Walker, a recovering addict, warns young people of the consequences. LAPD officials say they arrest 870 young adults for impaired driving every year.
We're not only checking for alcohol, we're also checking for drugs. Anybody who's impaired is gonna be stopped, they're gonna be detained, and if they're under the influence, they will be arrested.
In Panorama City, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
And if you do survive, the total cost of the first DUI conviction can run upwards of $15,000. A big rehab project for the Coliseum as it undergoes a renovation. Anna Marcos has more on the historic building and its new face.
For nearly a century, the USC Coliseum has hosted some of LA's most mega events.
No other location in the world has hosted three US presidents, two Super Bowls, and a World Series.
It holds memories and experience for all of us.
And now, part of the iconic building is about to go through a major facelift. The $270 million renovation will actually shrink the number of seats from 94,000 to 77,000 with a construction of luxury boxes and club suites.
It will further the transformation taking place right here in this community while bringing thousands of jobs.
It gives me great pride to know that this landmark built in 1923 is going to bring even more history and more pride.
And one more change is in the works in the name of one of the sponsors.
This new era for the Coliseum that will begin under a new name. United Airlines Memorial Coliseum.
And of course, the soon-to-be renovated landmark will have another claim to fame in 2028 when it hosts the Olympics. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Well, preparing for emergencies like earthquakes can be a tedious, daunting task. So why not get friends together to lighten the load? Well, Gil Reyes reports on some Hollywood talents who are coming together to make emergency preparedness fun.
And we'll stand over here, like, wow, look at all that stuff.
Right, exactly.
For these funny ladies, this is serious business. Organizing emergency supplies in the event of an earthquake. This group preparation is led by actress and voiceover artist Karen Huey.
I emailed friends, probably about a dozen people, and I said, "I haven't put together my emergency kit. Does anybody wanna get together and do this?" My thinking was to have my friends help motivate me to do it.
Karen and her friends all live near each other, a group of talented, mostly Asian-American actresses that you may recognize from stage and screen, oftentimes in comedy roles.
So we don't always see each other socially outside of our work, but we all care about each other.
When you're by yourself and you're thinking about things like earthquakes, you're not inclined to be funny. But when you get a group of people together, everybody started making doomsday jokes, and it made it so much easier to deal with.
They turned what could have been a daunting task into laugh-out-loud lunches and made purchases in bulk using Wirecutter. That's a New York Times blog that tests and recommends all sorts of items and also shows the most inexpensive places to buy them. The seven-gallon Aquatainer, for example, just $15 on Amazon.
And then we would decide what we wanted to order. And so we'd put a check, 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 and then we'd tally up. Oh, you know, we need to get five gas cans, and then who ordered that?
Everyone bought the essentials, of course, first aid kits, also food and water to last at least a week. But they also customized their kits. Actress and playwright Jeannie Sakata spends a lot of time on the road, so she added a multipurpose flashlight for her car in case she gets stuck inside.
This is something that can break through car windows to get someone out or in case you have to get out of your car. It also has a blade right here for cutting your seatbelt.
Actress Frida Foch Shen wanted to make her emergency lanterns to look as camera-ready as she is.
It's very bright, and it's this ugly, you know, blue-white color. So instead, you add theater gels, lighting gels, and you create... I know, this is an infomercial. It's really a great device. You create this gorgeous thing.
Atmosphere makes your complexion look beautiful.
Friends can also test and practice using items together. Amy Hill recently bought a solar charger that appeared to be defective.
It doesn't do anything, and I thought, well, it's broken, so I sent it back. She got the same one, and she plugs it in at the same time it's in the sun. I hadn't even considered that as a possibility. So I went, "Oh, that's how you use it." So now I gotta order it again, 'cause I'm an idiot.
Duck tape. We know that for theater.
Purell.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great buying in bulk.
Yes.
This is one of those items, I think they came like 12, and we just split it up among us.
Off of your water purifier. So if you've stored your water for a while, but you wanna make sure that it's okay to drink, drop one of these in.
You can view all the recommended items at thewirecutter.com.
And another benefit to making purchases with a group of friends, neighbors, basically a community, is that you can make purchases a lot cheaper than if you were to buy them by yourself.
The city's emergency management department supports these community efforts.
The power of neighbors coming together, helping neighbors. It's really important because during a disaster, a major disaster, chances are you, your neighbors, will be your first responders.
And could also provide comic relief while preparing for the worst. I'm Gil Reyes.
The women say it only took a few lunches to organize and place their orders, and as you can tell, they had a really fun time doing it. Loyal Dodgers fans hit a home run when they got a chance to hang around their favorite players. Rasha Goel has more on the one-day celebration that puts smiles on a lot of kids' faces.
Not hundreds, but thousands of Dodgers fans showed up to the sixth offseason Fan Fest at Dodger Stadium, a kickoff for the official 2018 Dodgers baseball season.
We've got a lot of interactive games for the kids. We have player and personality interviews, face painters, music, DJ. There's also special ticket opportunities.
And it looks like waiting in lines wasn't a problem. It was a free and family-friendly event.
We come here every year, it draws a lot of fans, and it's very... It really shows that the Dodgers really care about their fans.
And they do care. For Dodgers pitcher Kenley Jansen, an event like this one means a lot.
Just see our fans and see how close it is as a motivation for me to get ready for another season.
I feel like it's such a long offseason. It's a way to connect like halfway through the months, even though that Dodger season's gonna start in about two months, three months.
For these loyal fans, opening day on March 29th probably couldn't come sooner. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Nearly 35,000 fans attended the Dodgers Fan Fest at Dodger Stadium. New street improvements are coming to Silmar. Metro passengers share their train stories. And Chinatown celebrates a new playground at Alpine Rec Center. All these stories in City Beat. A groundbreaking ceremony was held for a street widening and improvement project on North San Fernando Road between Astoria Street and Sayre Street in Silmar. The project will widen the roadway from 25 feet to 32 feet and install a new curb, gutter, access ramps, and a sidewalk on the south side of North San Fernando Road to provide a safer corridor. Council District Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez said that her district has long been underserved in terms of the quality of the area's infrastructure. The Department of Public Works Bureau of Street Services will oversee the project.
We're also gonna be creating these very important sidewalks and gutter systems that are gonna help to create a local community environment that the community of Silmar is long overdue and will all be proud of upon its conclusion.
Metro partnered with filmmaker Herve Cohen to present Life Underground, an immersive art media installation and interactive web documentary at Los Angeles Union Station. The Metro Red Line is one of the 13 international subway systems featured in the exhibition. The temporary exhibit featured subway rider stories from across the globe.
Some of them just seem to be like what I'm doing right now, why I'm on this train right now, and what's going on. And then some of them are kinda like their whole journey right up to that point. And they're all fascinating.
The Department of Recreation and Parks, along with Councilmember Gil Sadio and community members, celebrated the grand opening of the Alpine Recreation Center's new playground. The 20-year-old playground was replaced by a newer and safer place to play. In a matter of three weeks, the apparatus for ages 5 to 12 was installed, and the sand was replaced with resilient surfacing. Officials say the Chinatown neighborhood will greatly benefit from this new feature with the park serving nearly 10,000 residents and Casteler Elementary School located across the street. A dangerous intersection in El Sarino is about to become much safer as officials break ground on new street improvements. Rasha Goel has more on how the community came together for one common purpose.
It's all about safety. The Alhambra Avenue Safety Improvements Project will bring improvements along a 1.5-mile stretch on Alhambra Avenue that runs from Valley Boulevard to the Alhambra City Limit. According to officials, it's been a dangerous route and the scene of several traffic collisions, including a hit-and-run in 2017 which took the life of a young mother.
Many of these streets are used by people in the San Gabriel Valley and beyond to get to work in downtown and back. And many times, people have forgotten that there's neighborhoods here, people live here. Families and children are walking around. And so when we make things safe for everyone in these corridors, it's helping us all.
Planned improvements include a new traffic signal light at Lowell Avenue, a new sidewalk adjacent to the El Sarino Arroyo Playground, and a future art wall welcoming all to the El Sarino community.
We discovered that there were plans to build a connector road bringing an off-ramp from the 710 freeway. So we founded Concerned Neighbors of El Sarino to protect our community. Since then, CNES, since Concerned Neighbors was formed, we stopped the connector road that would've brought 55,000 cars per day right here to this spot.
These improvements will make the community much more beautiful and safer for you to walk and enjoy your neighborhood.
The $1.2 million project has been the subject of ongoing discussions as El Sarino residents have long been plagued by cut-through traffic and the threat of the 710 freeway expansion. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Construction is expected to continue through the end of May. Experience Chinese culture at the Golden Dragon Parade. Come see blacksmiths forging hot steel before your very eyes. And an African dance competition heats up on stage. All this and this week's things to do. In celebrating over 100 years of tradition, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles presents the 119th Annual Golden Dragon Parade. With over thousands of individuals lining the parade route and thousands viewing the telecast each year, this colorful celebration has become the premier cultural event in the Southern California Asian-American community. The parade continues to be a rich and diverse experience for Angelenos of all ages and ethnicities. It takes place along North Broadway in Chinatown on Saturday, February 17th at 1:00 p.m. For more, visit lagoldendragonparade.com. The first annual Forge Festival calls to you. This family-friendly event will feature all kinds of fun things to do and see, as well as food and beverages. Come see blacksmiths forging hot steel live before your eyes. Witness copper transformed into objects of wonder and beauty. Let the kids forge clay at the Kids Clay Station. And to learn even more, stop by the Ask a Blacksmith Station. The festival will have a little something for everyone. It all takes place Sunday, February 18th at the Audubon Center in Debs Park, located at 4700 North Griffin Avenue. African dance has many origins, which sets it apart from most other dance traditions in the world. An African Dance LA in its second year of production aims to be the largest African dance competition with a focus on the art of contemporary African dance. This event is in recognition of our youth's efforts to promote and preserve African culture through dance and other art forms. It's sponsored by Councilmember Curran Price Jr. of the 9th District and other community organizations and businesses. The competition takes place Saturday, February 17th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the California African American Museum, located at 600 State Drive. For more, visit caamuseum.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Mr. Harris Dawson. Okay, good morning, good morning. If I could ask everyone to please take their seats. Today is... Today is Friday, February 16th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. And I have to say that this is a very, very special day. It is New Year's, so a very special day. So, with that said, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonnebuscayino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Kocorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of minutes.
Mr. O'Farrell moves, Mr. Kocorian seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file: One M in as much as the lien was paid in full; Receive and file one H in as much as the lien was paid and remaining fees are rescinded; Continue item one O, G, and P to March 2nd, 2018; Continue one R to March 20th, 2018; Reduce the lien for one F to $2,281.74 in as much as the lien was partially paid; And to continue one F to March 20th, 2018; And finally, sir, to continue item two to March 9th, 2018, sir.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Please continue.
Item one is an item notice for a public hearing, and, Mr. President, there are cards on this one.
Okay, let's continue.
Items two through five are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item three has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. So please, Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll, close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
Item six and seven are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on those items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on six and seven, sir.
Okay, we will move on. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called "special" or "public comment" for items not on the council's agenda.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to request that Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson approached the president's chair. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rue, and Mr. Sadio, and myself.
You're on camera. You're on camera.
Mr. Rue, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Council President, colleagues, friends, neighbors, and puppies! Council generals, organizations, and local leaders from across Los Angeles, it is a great honor to be with you and wish the city of Los Angeles a Happy New Year. The Lunar New Year is celebrated by many Asian cultures: In China, Korea, Vietnam, Thailand, Indonesia, Malaysia, the Philippines, Taiwan, Singapore, and right here in Los Angeles. This region is home to over 1.8 million Asian-Americans, the largest diaspora of Asian-American communities in the nation. And Los Angeles is proud to welcome the Year of the Dog. This holiday is more than 4,000 years old, and it is more than just about measuring time. It's the cycle of balancing energies, the yin and the yang, and the many competing forces which make life a never-ending adventure. The dog represents in the Chinese Lunar New Year calendar loyalty, hard work, and fairness. Year of the Dog are all about finding balance and working hard. Each year also welcomes one of the five elements, or qi, and these elements are Each year also welcomes one of the five elements, or qi, and these elements define energy that will guide the Year of the Dog ahead. This is not just the Year of the Dog, but it's also the Year of the Earth Dog. Earth is a stable and grounding element. It reminds us of our common roots to plant seeds for future growth, and that even the highest mountains are climbed, one foot in front of another. Therefore, the Year of the Dog is a year of harmony and tranquility, where we find success in collaborating, collaborative organizing, and respect for the gifts of the power of Mother Earth. It is a grassroots year when the humbling Earth and the community-oriented Dog call us to come together, to work together, and to take on the difficult tasks, not because they are hard, but because they are the right thing to do. The Year of the Dog reminds us that nothing great is ever made alone, that true success is won by communities, not individuals, and that anything worth doing takes a shared effort of us all. Interestingly enough, today also ends the Year of the Fire Rooster, a year defined by chaos, passion, and personal ambition. Looking back at this past year, I think I speak for many when I say we are ready for the Year of the Earth Dog. And I want to thank all of you for joining us here today as the city ushers in another year. And I want to welcome to the podium my colleague and good friend, Councilmember Gil Sadio of District One.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here with us. Let me invite you tomorrow for the Chinatown Parade, and I'm here to welcome you. Chinatown is in my district. It's the heart of my district. And the Chinese New Year is an important tradition in Chinatown and throughout the world, as Councilman Rue just indicated. It's a time when ancestors are fondly remembered and families give thanks for their blessings. It is celebrated with colorful festivities, parades, and most importantly, large family gatherings. One of the traditions is the annual selection of Miss Los Angeles Chinatown Court, and I would like to introduce the 2018 court to you right now. Let's begin with Little Princess Bling Bling Lau. Okay? Little Prince Benjamin Fong Respecio. Raise your hand. There you go. Little Queen Andrew Fong Respecio. Emily Fong, okay? Miss Friendship and Miss Photogenic Sally Yu. Fourth Princess Anna Wu. Third Princess Jacqueline Perry. Second Princess Jasmine Lam. First Princess Joyce Lam. And finally, the queen for 2018, Catherine Leon. Over 100 years ago, the Chinese community began the Golden Dragon Parade in the city of Los Angeles. Please join me at the parade tomorrow, Saturday, February 17th, at 1:00 PM. It starts on Hill Street in O尔 and travels north on Bernard Street, east to North Broadway, and then south on North Broadway to Caesar Chavez Avenue. In 1956, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles joined in the celebration and coordination of the parade. With us today, he wasn't with the sen, but with us today is Chester Chong, Chairman of the parade. Chester.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone of you. I'll be very proud of you, every one of you, and I'll be speaking over here every minute. But first of all, I would like to announce and I would like to share some important information for everyone, be proud of Los Angeles. What happened is the last year, the Miss Chinatown Queen Angela Liu, his representative of Los Angeles, going to Hong Kong to, you know, the contest of International Miss Chinatown. He got his first run-up, and we're very proud of her. And she's in Hong Kong right now. When she come back, I definitely will see everyone should be very proud of Los Angeles to represent Los Angeles to get the world contest. His first run-up is a princess, number one. She's a prince? Yeah, the queen. It's queen. Our queen. I'm talking about our queen last year. Last year is 2018, 2017, and she win the Worldwide International Miss Chinatown, the first run-up. That's a very important information to share, everyone. Number one. Number two. This year is 119 Chinese Dragon Parade in Los Angeles. And also, I'd be very proud of our District One, the Councilmember Gil Sadio, to helping us a lot for this year. And thank you so much and make it our, you know, the event successful. And this time, and on behalf of everyone, I mean, thank you so much, everybody, and the Year of the Dogs, and health, and good health for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. And this year, I am so glad to have a special addition at the Year of the Dog, and that is a special surprise, our Council President, Council President Wesson.
Good morning. In fact, everybody, Happy New Year. Let's give a real round of applause as we celebrate a new year. Now, I get here today, and Mr. Rue has on traditional garb, okay? And you look good, David. Mr. Sadio has on traditional garb, and nobody told me, so I wore my Black Panther. I'm dressed for Black Panther. But you know what? It's so great that this new year is the Year of the Dog. And our staffs worked so hard together. And so, Mr. Sadio's staff, Mr. Rue's staff, and my staff came up with a special treat for this new year and the Year of the Dog. And members, I'm so glad that it's Year of the Dog because we in the city of L.A. are gonna waive all adoption fees for dogs and cats at all of our shelters. So, please come in. It is free. All you have to pay is $20 for the license. But let's give a round of applause for free companion animals. And we're really lucky that it's Year of the Dog, not Year of the Dragon, because we only have one dragon, and I would have adopted that sucker. I would have went Game of Thrones on you guys in here. But anyway, in order to kick this day off, and like I said, we really need to thank Brenda Barnett and Animal Services, because they're the ones that came up with this program. So, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we are waiving all of the fees for dog and cat adoption. So, those of you that have social media, please post that on your social media. The more animals we can find homes for, then the more animals we can take in. So, as a special treat, I would like to call up, this is the first time we've ever adopted five dogs in one day. Where are the owners of the five dogs? Please come forward. So, this is the Year of the Dog. Get on each side. Okay. Who's, uh, where's Suzie's? We're giving you special certificates for your dog. Where's Suzie's owner? Is that you? All right. And Lucy's? Lucy's and Lulu's? Lulu is here. Tabitha? Bernadette? Oh, there? Okay, these are our Happy New Year, these are the Year of the Dog, and they have authentic certificates proving that. Let's give them one more round of applause. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Herb. And I think the dogs were adopted the second it came into council, right?
No, they were adopted before.
Oh, even before? Well, what a great year, Year of the Dog. Let's give another big round of applause to Brenda Barnett and Animal Services. Please adopt dogs and cats this weekend. Everything is free. All it takes is $20. And, you know, today, I'm also joined by my mother today. The one who brought me to life. I really want to thank her. And with that, where is? Oh, here it is. Yes, so, on behalf of the Los, excuse me, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, on all of our colleagues, we'd like to present for Lunar New Year, the Year of the Earth Dog, to the Asian-American community. Thank you so much.
Where are we? We're everywhere.
Mark, do I announce the luncheon? No? Thank you very much, Mr. President, colleagues. And again, I just want to make a quick announcement. I want to thank all the council generals for being here, all the community leaders. We have our Asian-American veterans here as well. And please join us after council, we have a luncheon right outside the Rotunda sponsored by our good friends at LG. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rue. Another big round of applause for Mr. Rue and all the participants in this morning's presentation. Mr. Price? You'll be next.
All right. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, one more? Okay, one more. Yes. All right. All right, thank you. Welcome in the bathroom.
Mr. Price, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members, we know that February is the month we celebrate the achievements of African-Americans. Celebrations around the country and throughout our city reflect the past, the present, and the future of the African-American community. In our chambers, under the leadership of President Wesson, we recognize the contributions of blacks in print, broadcast, and electronic media. And through the leadership of Councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson, we highlighted the importance of historical black colleges and universities in training our youth and professionals. Today, we celebrate the legacy of Central Avenue, a major transportation and commercial corridor in South Los Angeles. The avenue is certainly well-known for its history of jazz and blues clubs, but also, over the years, thousands of businesses and organizations have contributed to the rich legacy of Central Avenue, despite changing demographics. This morning, we're gonna spotlight three entities for their work and achievements. So, let's see the video.
As part of our African-American Heritage Month celebration, I want to shine the spotlight on three entities that have made valuable contributions to the Ninth District. While different, they have two very special things in common: a long history on Central Avenue, a major thoroughfare in the Ninth District, and a commitment to serve. You might recall the 1969 shootout at 41st and Central between the LAPD and the Black Panthers, certainly one of the more controversial moments that are history.
So, on December 9th, 1969, this is where the police raided their offices, and there was a five-hour shootout.
But on Central Avenue, the Black Panthers always looked out for their community. From free breakfast in schools to medical services, they were at the forefront of life-changing, community-based social programs for youth and seniors.
So, it's very important, this location is very important that the people don't forget about all the hard work that was done here. It's very important that they don't forget the leaders, Bunchy Carter, who was the first deputy minister, and Geronimo Jajaga, who was the second deputy minister, and all the other Panthers that did all the community work out of here.
Since 1970, the Central Avenue Neighborhood Health Foundation has worked tirelessly to provide quality care with compassion to anyone who walks through their doors, regardless of income or immigration status.
Central Avenue used to be called Charcoal Alley at the time, because this was sort of a burnt-out area after the West Riots. It was a health desert here. And so, when I came, obviously, the community just, you know, people actually actively came and asked what they could do to help. We'd come here at 6:00 in the morning, and we're here till 9:00 at night, literally for months, until we could get additional help. And immediately, we outgrew the space. And so, we looked across the street to here, and we saw the possibility that we could acquire property and build a proper clinic. And so, this clinic actually opened in 1970.
I feel like for the community over here, there are not a whole lot of opportunities. So, we are blessed to have this community over here, and the team are wonderful. They always try to accommodate.
Our goal is just to give the healthiest kids for the society. Doesn't matter if they are poor, if they are rich.
From health to nutrition, well, cakes and pies, that is, the 27th Street Bakery is a third-generation, family-owned business that's been a true community staple since 1956. They not only produce thousands of pies every holiday season, but they're also responsible for creating jobs and a lot of smiling faces in the district.
Thank you.
Well, it's the consistency in the ingredients. You know, Harry, consistent on, you know, not cutting corners with ingredients, because it's the quality and consistency of the taste. And so, we've done that so far, and it's proven successful, so we haven't changed it. This started off real small, in the kitchen, you know? 59 years ago, in the kitchen, and it expanded to here, to now. So, things can start off small, but if you be consistent, echo that word again, it can happen. It can happen. Well, it means a lot to me, you know, of course, it's my family's business, but I see the future generation of our family continuing to run 27th Street Bakery, and hopefully for another 50 years.
As we look to a brighter future, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the accomplishments made by these organizations. Their legacy on Central Avenue helps us fulfill the promise of the New Knights.
Members, the Elliott Chapter of the Black Panther Party was established in 1968, 41st and Central. This was the second office outside of San Francisco. At that time, the party pioneered free breakfast programs for schoolkids. At that time, the party pioneered free breakfast programs for schoolkids, health screenings, and programs for seniors. Representing the Black Panther Party and its past and present members is Gregory Everett, the Black Panther historian and videographer.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep this real quick because a couple of other people definitely need to talk right here today. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Roland Freeman. He was a Black Panther who was in that assault that you saw on that video right there. And he's no longer with us. And Gary Walker, who's also a producer on the project, who pushed me down this road and kept this thing going. And most of all, I'd like to thank my wife, Lorraine Everett, right here. Come up here, please, for being by my side, being by my side on this project, being on all of our, you know, dealing with the Panthers is something else. I'm gonna tell you that right now. You think that Black Panther movie coming out tonight is something else? We got the real Black Panthers. We're talking about dogs today, dragons, and Panthers. And we got the real Panthers in here today. But right now, I'm gonna let my son say something real quick. My boys want to say something. And then we're gonna hear from the, one of the real, original Black Panthers from the Southern California chapter.
Very quickly.
Just one minute.
All right.
All right, go ahead, guys.
We would like to thank Roland Freeman and producer Gary Walker for pushing our down the path of incredible documentary, 41st and Central. We would also like to thank the Panthers for allowing our family to serve party through the art of filmmaking. Our dad doesn't have to be part of, put his life on the line to serve the people. Instead, he's able to do it with a camera and an editing system.
Here are some of the various social programs that the Panthers provided. They had the breakfast program, sickle cell testing, free medical clinics, black history and political education classes, the organization of black student unions at local high schools and colleges, and many other programs that serve the people.
It is indeed an honor to be here. Thank you, Councilmen, for allowing us to stand before you, to thank you all for saluting us for the work that we did. Fifty years ago, we had no idea that we would be celebrated today. But here with me are John Washington, Gil Parker, and Bernard Arifat, who were former members originally in the Los Angeles Chapter. Bernard was actually inside our headquarters when the police raided it. And Gil Parker was one of the first Panthers to get arrested that morning on the roof of the building. So it's an honor to be here. And I just want to say this one thing. Many people have misconceptions of what the Black Panther Party was all about. We were not a racist group. We were not like the Ku Klux Klan. We were a community group, and our legacy was providing service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Central Neighborhood Health Foundation has been a formidable institution in our community, providing quality healthcare services regardless of ability to pay. Dr. Brown has been the guiding force since it was founded in 1970. He's joined here today with his wife, Marcella, who is a real partner and daughter. And so Dr. Brown, please.
Let's give Dr. Brown a round of applause. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, honorable members of the City Council, and especially the Councilman of the new 9th District, the Honorable Kern Price. I'm honored and humbled by this awesome tribute, but I accept it on behalf of my family, who gave me the necessary support, and of course, all my colleagues and coworkers, past and present, who have paved the way for me to come to this juncture. There are too numerous for me to give a comprehensive list here, but I would be greatly remiss if I did not pay tribute to the late illustrious former congressman and lieutenant-governor Mervyn Dimmerly, who was a stalwart champion of inner-city health care throughout my career. And of course, to the late, great Emperor of the 9th District, Gil Lindsay. When I was just a little boy, I would often hear grown-ups talking about certain individuals who they described as having been called to the ministry or to teaching or politics. And as children are inclined to do, I would daydream about myself as a young adult encountering a mysterious caller, a genie, you might say, who would appear magically, tap me on the shoulder, and give me three wishes. So wasn't I ever disappointed when the grown-ups burst my bubble by explaining that this was just a figure of speech? But now that I'm grown up, and then some, I have news for all the grown-ups and youngsters out there. I actually got a call on the phone. Yes, it was a mysterious call indeed. It even happened after midnight. An unknown female voice, gentle, reassuring, and persuasive. But let me not get ahead of my story. A couple of years before that call, I had finished my training at LA County General Hospital and followed my friend and mentor, the late, great Hugh Hemsley, to a small community hospital at 120th and Broadway. The Watts riots of 1965 erupted shortly after my arrival, so I had a baptism of fire because I was literally practicing in a war zone. And that is where I was, covering the emergency room on that fateful night. I had just discharged the last patient and checked in with a switchboard operator to let her know I would be resting in the doctor's lounge. I'd barely settled in when the phone rang. It was that mysterious lady. She said her name was Monday, and she was calling on behalf of the oldest clinic in the community, dating back to 1929. The last doctor had recently died, and the riots had made the area too scary for most. The patients were having a hard time. She encouraged me to just come on a trial basis to this corner of 27th and Central and see for myself that the need was great and the community very supportive. Needless to say, my newlywed wife and I came and saw. And after just a couple of days, it was obvious that this was our calling, our destiny. That was 51 years ago, and the community response was so intense that within two months, we had to hire another doctor. Within two years, we had to build a new clinic building, where over the years, we have taken care of some 200,000 individual patients. We are now a federally qualified health center with multiple locations in three counties, integrated by electronic medical records. We've gone to this point in part because I became that voice by night and day, that persuasive caller, successfully recruiting an extraordinarily skilled, dedicated, and resourceful team of managers, providers, and support personnel who run the operations of Central Neighborhood Health Foundation every day. So clearly, though we are not now at our goal, and this celebration is not about an endpoint, we are resolved to press on with hope and appreciation in our hearts until that day when a person's zip code is no longer the most reliable predictor of their health status. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, and your family, for your dedication and service to our community. Last, but certainly not least, is the 27th Street Bakery. This is a third-generation family business started by Harry and Sadie Patterson. And since 1956, since 1956, it's provided jobs and served delectable sweets, like those that are on your desk, sweet potato or pecan pies on your desk. We have, representing the Patterson family, is the granddaughter of the founder, and we welcome Jeanette Bolden.
Thank you to Councilman Price. Thank you for everyone. 27th Street Bakery has been in our community since 1956. My grandfather instilled in all of us that quality and service were the two things you had to do. From a young child, I remember the hard work that my grandfather put into the business. It was handed down to my mother and brother since in 1980. And from then on, we aspire to continue to hopefully produce great desserts for our community, provide jobs and opportunity, provide shelter for individuals, provide sweets to individuals that probably didn't even been able to afford it. We've grown to produce pies for Smart &amp; Finals, and Rouse, 7-Eleven, and our staple has been a lot of our mom-and-pop businesses in the community. I'd like to say thank you, and if you haven't visited 27th Street Bakery, you're missing out. Thank you.
Again, let's give a round of applause to all of our honorees. As I said, they have dedicated themselves to providing services in the community and to making certain that we have the kind of environment that we want to live in. And so let's, yes, let's come up, Dr. Brown. Let's take a picture with the awardees, and then we'll go in the back.
All power to the people!
Okay, Madam-
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, this is a time to celebrate and to rededicate. And as you very well know, we should be making black history every day, not just in February.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, what I think I'm gonna go into now is we're gonna do some general public comment. Is Jacqueline, so sergeants, if you could clear the way? And I'd like to call up Jacqueline Richardson. Mike O'Gara. Carly Kirchen. Sergio Sorsa. Ms. Richardson, come on. Yes, ma'am.
Will the new high-end restaurant to be built in front of City Hall and in front of the Los Angeles Times make a profit if the present trends continue? First of all, most of the employees in the surrounding buildings don't even have the time to take a survey to tell you they don't have the time to attend to the restaurant that's going to be built. First of all, most of them have their own cafeterias. Almost every large building in this surrounding area has your own cafeteria, generally speaking. But so far, they haven't had the survey to tell you they don't have time to attend the new-end restaurant, high-end restaurant. If the present trends continue, it'll be difficult for the high-end restaurant to make a profit or to break even. Furthermore, they don't have the time to take a survey.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mike?
Good morning. My name's Mike O'Gara. I've lived in Sun Valley for the last 43 years. About 100 cannabis licenses have been issued citywide to businesses which are gonna pay 35% taxes on their sales. However, according to an article in the Daily News printed yesterday, there's about 200 to 300 illegal businesses in the city which do not pay any taxes and now represent a thriving black market, undercutting the prices of our legal cannabis businesses paying taxes. We need to close the unlicensed businesses. Yesterday, in that same article, it states that the police have a tough time serving a search warrant on these establishments as the process is quite lengthy. I'm at a loss to figure out why they need a search warrant. Ordinance number 185345 passed by the City Council includes Section 105.06, which states, A, it's unlawful to conduct any commercial cannabis activity in the city without a license issued by the state of California and by the city. If they don't have a license, close them down. The City Council needs to give the police whatever directive they need to close the unlicensed-
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi there, my name is Carly Kirchen. I'm a renter in Highland Park, and I'm here with Unite Here Local 11. I'd like to speak about the short-term rentals ordinance. As you all know, the ordinance was introduced in June of 2015. And since that date, we've lost almost 5,000 long-term rental units that could be given to long-term tenants, residents of the cities, to short-term rentals like Airbnb. Every single day, we lose almost five units. These are homes that families could be living in. Every month, we lose 147 units. This is unacceptable. As a renter, you know, my landlord is doing renovations on my house. I'm fearful that I will be evicted or that the rent will increase. And it's, the housing crisis is making it very unaffordable to live in the city. Please pass the short-term rentals ordinance as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. So Sergio, you are, sir?
Yes. Hi there, Council, and good morning. My name is Sergio. I am 26 years old, and I'm with Unite Here. I used to be a restaurant server and a phone operator in a hotel. The housing crisis in Los Angeles is real. And, you know, trying to find housing is such a huge issue, especially for folks my age. I used to live in an apartment without a stove because, for over a year, because that's all I could really afford. I live in Koreatown, and I really want this council to pass a short-term rental ordinance as soon as possible. It's been in front of you for years, and it's about time that you do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get Gary, Gary, if you're still here, Gary August, Aegis, Bill Watkins, Jose Diaz, William Sanchez. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Gary August. Everybody suffers with that, struggles with that name. I'm a member of the Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council. Illegal and unlicensed cannabis businesses do not pay taxes. Enforcement is crucial at this stage. It will save us countless hours and resources in the future if we eliminate the illegal cannabis businesses now as opposed to later. Please allocate sufficient resources to ensure that the law-abiding, tax-paying cannabis businesses thrive. At a recent police conference, the police mentioned that the problem is tracking the illegal establishments because they can move around a lot. The Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council has been at the forefront in locating the illegal businesses and communicating with our local police. We've also used social media and flyers to enlist the aid of our stakeholders in identifying the locations.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Bill, Bill Watkins, Jose Diaz, Manuel Zetel, William Sanchez. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Minamerez Manuel Sitle.
One moment.
My name is Manuel Sitle. The reason why I'm here- is- Mr. Versetti was a counselor. We've been asking him for help. We've been asking him for help for five years. He hasn't been able to help us. We have asked help from Mitch O'Farrell. And, and, uh, according to the high ra, uh, costs of rent that they've been giving- Mr. Mitch O'Farrell. Mr. Mitch O'Farrell. We have asked for help. And he hasn't been able to help us. And the fact that the owners have gave him a lot of, they have gave the owners a lot of right to increase the rents. We have to live in the, in the streets. And up until now, the representatives of the City of Los Angeles- They have asked for help, and they haven't been able to do it. Please, we need your help, so we don't have to live on the streets.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to, uh, call up Mr. Walsh. We can pull him up on my screen. Mr. Walsh, you have items one, six, and seven. Yes, sir.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. I'll go right into my, uh, minute.
Okay, give him his one minute for general public comment.
Hey, all those white racists who are fighting against the brown people taking over the city, guess what just happened? The city was taken over by a minority, and you know what the minority was? The minority was yellow! The owner of the L.A. Times, one person, Patrick Sheehy Shung, one person, and if you want to do any business with the L.A. Times, you better get on your knees and approach them, because, uh, that is, no, absolutely one-hundred percent in charge of the L.A. Times. One-half billion dollars he paid for it, and everybody can get on their knees and suck his cock.
Okay, let me get, uh, Mr. Montoya. Luis, I thought I saw ya, I wasn't sure. Please come forward, and it's good to see you, Mr. Attorney.
You flatter me too much, Mr. President. Um, good morning, Council President and fellow members of the City Council. I actually came here to see, enjoy the lunar, uh, lunar New Year festivities, but I, I was held up in court, so I apologize for that. Um, just as a concerned citizen, my two cents, I hope, uh, Mr. Council President and city members of the, uh, City Council members can take heed that I think the number-one issue facing our city is the housing crisis, honestly. Uh, I mean, I've lived here all my life, I remember the ninety-two riots as a kid growing up on Crenshaw and Pico, and I've seen the ups and downs of our community, and it's good right now that our city's experiencing, uh, an economic boon, but at the same time, we have to be mindful of the citizens that are left behind. I think that as a city, it should be incumbent upon our elected officials and concerned citizens to, uh, take housing into consideration, and that should be one of its top priorities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good to see you. Give my best to your family. Let's call Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you have items one, six, and seven.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. The lien item today is robust. You have, you have amassed a number of liens on properties, mostly for rubbish, trash, and debris from years ago that have been cleaned up, but eight-hundred-and-forty-dollar late fee, twenty-five-hundred-dollar penalty. Uh, some of these violations are actually for, uh, putting, uh, an unpermitted small addition to a property in order to accommodate more people. As you know, sir, we're experiencing a homelessness crisis in our community. So, to be criminalizing this activity and expanding the violations on the various lists, uh, you know, for this kind of for-profit prosecution against people who, uh, are struggling to get by is, is severely problematic, is the best way to put it. It is, it is hurtful, it's not what we expect our city employees to be doing, going out and generating fee recovery revenue. There was a very interesting piece, uh, on NPR about a law firm called Silver and Wright. We can check with Mr. Krikorian if he's been engaging them or not. I haven't checked yet, but, but this is a firm that is applying, uh, hostile actions towards residents, all of the guys that we have to get this money. A woman, eighty years old, a rooster in her yard, uh, they, she tried to get the tenant to get rid of the rooster, she did finally, but she's now being forced to pay a sixty-dollar, uh, sixty, sorry, six-thousand-dollar penalty. And, uh, this is heartbreaking. This is another guy who built that little addition, thirty-one-thousand-dollar fine, and he, he has to commute three hours a day. So, I, I, I just ask Weezer and all the geniuses to please help on this. It's not, it's not cool. It's really, it's really hurtful, and, and let's hope that Englander can quickly find an OVB for the fire department out in the valley, though they don't deserve it. We should definitely spend a fortune on a new fire department clubhouse. And, uh, I would also say thank you regarding the Prop K initiatives that have been circulating around. I know Bloomingfield's trying to get a skate park going, and we do appreciate it. One concern is that skate parks could cause further injury, and I know that there's been a lot of concern about liability, and I know we agreed to that in nineteen ninety-six, but doesn't it make sense? Fobble, what do you think?
We voted on the Prop K items.
We did.
Okay, uh, Mr. Previn, you've heard this city attorney. Uh, I don't think you've referenced item six or seven, so you can go to one of there.
How about my general, is it not time for general? Oh, six and seven, I'm happy to do.
Given as one-
No, no, six and seven is good, I appreciate, I have one minute for that, but let me see what six and seven, if there, so weed abatement, yeah, the weed and brush abatement assessment, you're posting just parcel numbers, so I assume you're sending them letters, and I assume Bonin is certifying them with an extra fifteen hu, fifteen-dollar, make sure it gets there, but, but I just feel like when I looked, there's no way you would know, so I hope that all those letters are getting there, because coming up on, I believe it's April twentieth, we are going to have a big hearing and then zap all these people with fines. Um, finally, I just have a simple question for the city attorney. Uh, if you are a council member, like, say, wait a minute, I was, uh-
No, we give you thirty-five more seconds, so go ahead.
I appreciate that. Thank you. It's Eric Previn again in the thirty-five second bonus round. Uh, my question is, a guy like Bloomingfield, council member, doing a good job, if he decides to form his own 501(c)(3), it's called the, you know, fix-up Bloomingfield's area 501, can he then come to the council and say, "Council, I request humbly," not me, but my 501(c)(3) that I run, a thirty-five-thousand-dollar donation? What do you say? Is that kosher under our current rules? It's a conflict of interest, or not? I mean, it is a 501, so that's a question I know on Tuesday at ten AM, up on ten-ten or whatever, they're gonna have an ethics commission meeting, so let's see if we-
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue one and thirty days to March twentieth, twenty-eighteen, sir.
Okay, without objection. Okay, let's bring up Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you have items one, six, and seven, and then general public comment.
No wonder why gang reduction and this committee has to appoint Ms. Oura Garcia. In our findings, in our background search into her history, there was no-
Uh, Mr. Herman, would you please connect this to one of the agenda items?
I am speaking on item seven, foo. Six, seven, and one, foo. One, six, and seven.
Mr., Mr. Herman, you have to speak to the items. You have items one, six, and items seven.
So, politically, I'm correct, except I'm doing it in the order that I like to do it, from the back to the front.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Herman, you have, uh, the agenda for the wrong day, so as usual, you are not on topic. So, you're gonna speak to items six and seven, or we'll cut immediately to your general public comment. Choice is yours.
Well, the hell with six and seven for the record, and fuck you, now my general public-
Okay, now we'll give him his one minute.
In regards to the segregation of the earlier presentation, you see, we have divisions, and why that? You sit veterans behind a group of individual young women. It's all a false of a presentation. You don't give a fuck about veterans, the same you don't give a fuck about the gravely disabled persons on the street today. And I can't say with any more emphatic passion than this, you're all fucked out of your mind. You all should go get some type of psychiatric evaluations on what not you think, but not what you do, but what you say and can't do. Bullshit. HHH means bitch, bitch, bitch. And as long as I got the floor, I can only salute you on behalf of your false regime.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go to Ms. Renee. You have items one and six. Ms. Renee, and please stick to the items, and then you have your, uh, one minute for public comment. So you have items one and six.
Hello, uh, City Council Members. On item number one, I'd like to, um, uh, submit a complaint to you that the City of Los Angeles council members and public officials are discriminating against order to complys. Um, you have twenty items listed today, and each one of them has an order to comply from the building and safety. However, in Bonin's Councilman District, they can evade compliance, and actually, Bonin's District helps them evade compliance with the law. On number six, um, I, I wanna know if on the ordinance for number six, if the city's gonna be held accountable to the same ordinance that you're putting through. Um, if you go on my Twitter account, Lea in L.A., you will see, I, I, I don't have time to go through everything here, so I'm now on Lea in L.A., and I'm twittering video and pictures of your totally trashy, covered in, in, in weeds. So does the weed and brush abatement also apply to City of Los Angeles and the City Council members? Because otherwise, it would be unfair and arbitrary. Bringing up unfair and arbitrary, dear council members, my public comment, I'd like to-
Let's give her her one minute for public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lea Renee Memzik, and I'd like to bring to your attention, once again, a complaint regarding public officials corrupt alteration of written laws. LAMC twelve-point-two-oh-point-two-G-one-F was written, published, and states, "Any other finding or finding as may be required for the development by the California Environmental Quality Act." However, public officials have corruptly altered it. I brought it to your attention on October twentieth and many other times. I'm delivering you the document again, once again today. It's not an error because you know and fail to correct, and there's harm, and there's a benefit to the city, because see, if the city doesn't tell anybody, the city doesn't have to submit their own city environmental rector, records. That's fraud, once again. Please correct. I instruct you per the California Constitution to correct-
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Renee. Julius, public comment? I don't see that. Well, we, our relationship is such, I'll just, come on up, sir.
I am the true president of America. I don't have time to explain in fifty-five seconds, but that's the most true motherfucking thing ever fucking said on this piece of shit, shithole, fucking planet. I wouldn't take a shit on this fucking planet. I go to Mars to take a shit. Those children in Florida were murdered because of you, Herb, and the City Council, because of the Young Turks, because of CNN. The shooter made it clear to me with his actions that he did that shooting because tamarindomics is being kept from the world.
Thank you. Okay, let's work, uh, vote, prepare to vote on items, uh, the one, six, and seven, is it? Is that what's up?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so on these items, I have no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, is anyone here from the audience that's signed up to speak and didn't get a chance to speak? Okay, what's before this body, Madam Clerk? What is before this body, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, one second. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, rising for purposes of an introduction, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
No, not at all.
Come on up. Uh, members, a hundred years ago, uh, the United States was, uh, immersed in World War I, and there were food shortages and other concerns that, uh, we had in this country. And a group of visionary women came together to form the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. And, um, since that time, uh, the academy has become the world's largest organization of food and nutrition professionals with over a hundred thousand credentialed practitioners, uh, registered dietitian nutritionists, dietetic technicians, registered and other dietetics professionals holding undergraduate and advanced degrees in nutrition and dietetics, as well as students who are committed to improving the nation's health and advancing the profession of dietetics. So, um, here in California, the California Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics is led by Ruth Freckman, its president, and Ruth is a nationally recognized author and registered dietitian nutritionist. Um, Ruth and I have worked together for about fifteen years since I was on the Burbank Board of Education to try to improve nutrition for, uh, young people and students, and it's a great privilege for me to be able to recognize the academy on its centennial year and to present to Ruth on behalf of the California Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics. Uh, Ruth, I want to present this to you on behalf of all of the members of the City Council, and congratulations on, uh, a hundred years and counting.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Ruth. Thank you for your service. Okay, Mr. Herman. All right, Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
That brings, uh, council has motions for posting a referral.
They're posted, they're referred. That brings us to announcements. Uh, let me make the first announcement to those of you that, uh, can hear us or, or see us. I want to make sure that you know that at all of the city's shelters, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we are waiving the fees, uh, in the event that you choose to adopt any dog or any cat. The only thing that you'll have to pay is the license fee, which is twenty dollars. So I am urging all of the folk that listen and watch, if there was ever an opportunity to go and find a companion animal, that opportunity is this weekend, because basically, our animals are free. For those dog and cat lovers that are watching us today, if you would put on your Facebook pages or Twitter accounts, please help us, uh, inform the public that, uh, Friday and Saturday and Sunday, if you are in need of a companion animal, go to any city shelter, and you can get that for free. And lastly, Mr. Rue, Mr. Sadio, we broke a record today. We adopted five dogs in, in about fifteen minutes. Uh, it's the first time that we've had multiple dogs, and every one of those companion animals were selected before we even began our program, so that's successful. So, any other announcements, uh, Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to remind my colleagues and anyone that's watching, and thank you so much for, uh, for initiating that very special opportunity for people to adopt animals, uh, this weekend. But I also want to remind people that you have an opportunity to foster an animal, uh, and, uh, it helps to give an opportunity for these animals that are often waiting to be adopted, the chance to just get out, get walked, and be cared for, uh, outside of our shelters. And so this weekend, I'm actually gonna be fostering an animal as well.
Wonderful.
And I'd like to invite all of you to, to partake in that. Oh, come on, Marie. And so, but, uh, I think it's just a really nice break for these animals to get- But I think it's just a really nice break for these animals to get out of our shelters and to just be out in our local parks, or just be cared for. There's not minimum length of time, but also want to encourage and invite everyone to participate in that.
And thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And members, if I could get each and every one of you, and I know that some of your offices have already done it, if you'd put on your website, or if you guys would post that this weekend, we're having the dog adoptions. The more dogs that we can get adopted, it gives us more space, it's a good financial move on our part. So we just want anybody that's sitting at home wanting to adopt a dog or a cat, this is the best weekend to do it. Okay, any other announcements? Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to remind all city hall staff who is hearing this meeting that we are having a Lunar New Year luncheon celebration, where we will have performances by the Thai and the Korean dancers and drummers in the forecourt. So if you're available and you want to come see a show, come on down and join us in the celebration of Lunar New Year that is sponsored by council member Sadio, President Weston, and myself. Thank you.
Any other announcements? If everyone in the chambers could please rise for adjourning motions, I'm gonna look to my left, so I want to recognize Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues in public. It's with a heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Art Herrera, a good friend, a veteran, an advocate for community, for Boa Heights and the community. Above all, he was an extraordinary human being who did a lot for others and for his community and for our veterans. Arturo Herrera was born on January fourteenth, nineteen thirty-seven, in Boa Heights, and grew up, along with ten siblings, on Bernal Street by the Fourth Street Bridge in Boa Heights. I actually grew up in the same block that's known as El Ojo. Art attended Euclid Avenue Elementary School, Stevenson Middle School, and graduated from Roosevelt High School as part of the winter class of nineteen fifty-six. Art was drafted into military service in nineteen fifty-seven and served in the United States Air Force, serving overseas in Libya and North Africa. He was honorably discharged from the Air Force in nineteen sixty. Upon returning from military service, Art went back to work at Sears, and later that year married Maria Luisa Dominguez Portillo on July twenty-ninth, nineteen sixty. Art and Maria settled in Boa Heights and had three children, Arturo Junior, Annette, and Andy. Art was extremely active in the community, and in particularly for those events and efforts that assisted and honored his fellow veterans. He was a huge advocate for homeless veterans and trying to ensure proper housing for them. He was also involved in the Veterans of Foreign Wars post forty-six ninety-six in a number of capacities, including as commander in the mid nineteen nineties. Art helped organize the Año Cinco Puntos Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies that have become among the most treasured events in the East Side honoring our veterans. It was during that time in the nineteen nineties that Art met his friend and fellow veteran Tony Zapata, who's here with us today. He recruited Tony to join the Veterans of Foreign Wars post forty-six ninety-six, and a great friendship was born. You often see both of them in Boa Heights, helping and assisting in any way they can, and in particular, organizing great events for our veterans. Art was quoted on one news report saying that he did what he did in order to help organize veteran events and salute our veterans as a way to pay tribute to his brother, who was killed in the Korean War, and his three other brothers who also served in the military. He also wanted to see kids across the nation, see how and what our veterans did and have done for all of us. Art was also involved, a Resurrection Church neighborhood watch group that meets regularly to discuss environmental and safety issues in Boa Heights. He was also a member of Resurrection senior groups. And in two thousand nine, when we opened the Gold Line Extension metro line, Art Herrera was there as the coach of the community advisory committee that was so important in allowing us to open at long last the first rail line in the East Side in decades. More than anything, Art loved his community, and his community loved him back. He was a good man who loved to be around people, to share stories, and to enjoy a good laughter. He was a loving father, husband, grandfather, and friend. His positive energy, infectious laugh, and big smile warmed up, it warmed up any room, no matter which room it was. He would always bring love and good thoughts to many people he interacted with. He was loved by many, my deepest condolences to his wife Maria, his three children, Arturo Junior, Annette, and Andy, his granddaughters Vanessa and Victoria, and his countless friends, including those here today, and now those whose lives he touched. Thank you to Tony Zapata, his good friend, who joined us here, along with some veterans who send their love and respect for someone who has done so much for them. He would be greatly missed. Someone who has done so much for the Boa Heights community could be found at every community meeting, finding ways to assist and help. A great veteran, a great American, a great friend. May he rest in peace.
Well said, Mr. Wezar. Are there any more adjourning motions to my left? Now I'm looking towards my right, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like us to take a moment to remember two figures from the rich sports history of Los Angeles. First, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of former Los Angeles Dodger Wally Moon, who passed away on February ninth in Texas at the age of eighty-seven. Dodger fans will remember Wally Moon for his famous moon shots, the home runs that he hit in, over the short porch left field fence in the Coliseum during the Dodgers' first years here. Wally Moon entered the major leagues in nineteen fifty-four and became the National League Rookie of the Year that year, beating out Hank Aaron of all, if you can believe it. He went on to become a three-time All-Star and Gold Glove outfielder. He served in the outfield, the Dodgers, with Hall of Famers Duke Snyder and Carl Farillo. And it was his former teammate with the Cardinals, Stan Musial, who taught him to make this inward, inside-out swing, so that as a left-handed batter, he could still hit these home runs over the left field porch. And he became well-known for that, and Vin Scully adopted the phrase "moon shots" to describe those home runs, because at the time, we were engaged with the Sputnik space race and all with the Soviet Union. Wally Moon went on to be an All-Star in nineteen fifty-seven and fifty-nine, served on, played on a number of the Dodgers' World Series championship teams, and he's survived by his daughters Zola, Elizabeth, Mary, and Larissa, and his son, Wally Joe, as well as seven grandchildren. His wife Betty Knowles predeceased him in twenty sixteen. Members, I'd ask also that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Booton Ben the Toeless Wonder. And Mr. Buscagno, Booton Ben Agajanian was a San Pedro native. He was the brother of the legendary J.C. Agajanian, who Southern Californians know the famous racing family that were native to San Pedro. Ben Agajanian was the oldest living Los Angeles Ran, before he passed away just a week ago at the age of ninety-eight. Ben Agajanian is one of just two players who played in the All-American Football Conference, the American Football League, and the NFL. He was the kicker on two world championship teams, the nineteen fifty-six Giants and the nineteen sixty-one Green Bay Packers. And he's known as the Toeless Wonder because he lost half of his foot in an industrial accident, and then had a specially designed shoe on his kicking foot that allowed him to continue his kicking career. He kicked his first NFL field goal with the Steelers in nineteen forty-five with his arm in a sling, because in that very different era of football, he had also played lineman and had broken his arm and went on to go ahead and kick field goals despite that fact. He set the record for the All-American Football Conference of fifty-three yards for a field goal in nineteen forty-seven, and then went on to have a very successful career as a kicking coach, actually, for the Dallas Cowboys for twenty years. His kicking shoe is in the Pro Football Hall of Fame, even though he isn't. But still, he's a colorful part of Los Angeles history, and he's survived by his son Louis, his daughters Lynn and Lori, ten grandchildren, and eleven great-grandchildren. And he was preceded in death by his wife of forty-nine years, Arlene, and their eldest son Larry. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, in Parkland, Florida, was the eighteenth mass shooting in a school in the United States this year alone. I understand that early next week, we may do something more significant and pay tribute and in remembrance of the victims, but I'd like to read their names today. Colleagues, I think that unless and until all of us can personalize the needless death of a fourteen-year-old at a public school and be inconsolable about it, unless and until Congress does something significant about gun safety legislation and will stop being the slave to the NRA, then we should all remain inconsolable and not relent until something is done about gun safety legislation in this country. We're all diminished. We are all, we're less significant as Americans because of this plague afflicting our country, and that is crazed gunmen walking in almost anywhere you can imagine and just shooting. So I would like to read the names of the victims and their ages from the Parkland school shooting yesterday. We have Nicholas Dorrett, who was seventeen. Aaron Feis, thirty-seven. Jamie Gutenberg, fourteen. Alyssa Aladev, also fourteen years old. Scott Beagle, thirty-five years old. Meadow Pollock, eighteen. Christopher Hickson, forty-nine. Luke Hoyer, fifteen. Carmen Shentrop, sixteen. Gina Montalto, fourteen. Alex Schacter, fourteen. Peter Wang, fifteen. Elena Petty, fourteen. Martin Duke Anguiano, fourteen. Helena Ramsey, seventeen. Joaquin Oliver, seventeen, whose parents brought him over at age three to flee the violence in Venezuela and make a better life for he and his family. Cara Lugran, fourteen. And those are the names of the victims, and I encourage everyone to go on the Time Magazine website or any variety of websites that have published their stories, their hopes, their dreams, and the fact that none of us will ever get the pleasure of meeting them in person, nor will anyone else on this planet ever have the pleasure of meeting these people in person because their lives were taken away way too soon. And I hope that these moments of silence that some in Congress continue to rise and effectuate will come to an end, and they'll actually do something to save the lives of these young people, especially our young people who are, who need to be in a safe environment in school, and in a nurturing, safe environment, free from guns and weapons. May they all rest in peace. May the dozens that are injured in yesterday's shooting, may they find solace. There are shattered lives across this country because of this plague, and we must do something about it, and we need to care about this issue in every city and every county across this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Are there any more adjourning motions to my right? I don't see any. Members, I had an opportunity to briefly chat with Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Wezar this morning. Mr. Rue and I experienced an event that I pray that none of you have to ever experience. I guess one of the worst feelings in the world is helpless, that something is going on right before your eyes, and there's nothing that you can do about it. Mr. Rue, okay, wait a minute.
Take him out. Take him out.
Mr. Herman? Yeah?
Get out. Go back to your rock.
[roaring]
And for the record, Mr. President, for the record, Mr. Herman continues to delay and disrupt this meeting, shouting out as he's being escorted out by the police department.
Mr. Rue and I were fortunate to be invited to participate in a New Year celebration at the Korean Senior Citizen, Senior Center and Community Center that's located in my district adjacent to David's. We were also present with our colleague from the state, Miguel Santiago was there with us. And as the program started, and we were getting ready to take our seats on the stage, there was an individual, a man by the name of Samuel Kim, who had been so looking forward to attending this event. He had traveled all the way from like Hesperia or somewhere to be at this event, and he was to be a performer. So he was lining up to be part of the performance, and all of a sudden, there was a request for medical assistance. And, you know, David and I did what we could, and I was very proud of how calm and cool and collected our colleague, Mr. Rue, was. He made me calm, as we tried to ensure that this individual was left alone and given the space, and we had help from the police department, and David and I saw his last breath. And that is an experience that I don't wish on anybody. And so we just felt that it was very appropriate that we adjourn in the memory of this man that we never met. We didn't know, he was just so excited to be at this New Year celebration. He was so excited to be a participant and to perform, and so excited to be active in the Korean-American community. And David and I felt that the least that we could do was to adjourn as a body in his memory. And I'd like to ask David to say a few words, because we were together, I just want you to know that I'm so glad that we were there together. I think we fed off of each other's strength. And I don't know about you, but I had an unbelievably rustful night last night. So, in fact, David here.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you stated, his name was Mr. Samuel Kim, and his Korean name was Kim Seongte. And he was seventy-two years young. And, you know, we were fortunate enough for LAPD to also be in with us, and we had immediate response, but unfortunately, he did pass. But we learned, as the time passed, we learned that, you know, later in life, he became a pastor, and he did live in Hesperia, Victorville, about three hours away. And he was part of a cultural performance troupe, where he went all around town, performing for other seniors and for other community groups. And till the very last day, he was performing community service. And, you know, and there was a little bit of solace in the fact that he left this world doing something that he loved, and giving back to the community. And I tried to be, and council president gave me lots of strength, and I was trying to be as cool as possible, but I was traumatized, as you could, how could you not be? And I just felt afterwards, and of course, the program was canceled, I just felt I had to, you know, say a few words. I walked around and greeted some of the seniors, and I didn't know why, but I just felt... and I didn't, I didn't know why, but I just felt that I had to. And, and I, as I did, um, an amazing thing happened. Um, it was, it was almost therapy and the seniors were so strong and powerful. Of course, they were also shocked, but they told me, um, you know, he's blessed. It's a good day because he was amongst all of us when he passed. And he was amongst all of us doing what he loved in community service and we, and, and there was a prayer, there was a pastor, a deacon in the presence and he gave a prayer where everybody joined. Um, and, you know, and everyone, every senior I spoke to said, you know, he went straight to heaven and, you know, and he's, uh, he, he's, God called him and, and it was his time to go and, uh, but he left this world serving others and doing what he loves. So, uh, I found some solace in that and, um, and I hope, and, 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 and they said on, on New Years, Lunar New Years, in, in front of so many friends and family, um, that it was a, a blessing. So, um, I, I found some solace in that and I hope we all can too and how, and I realized again how precious life is and especially in this New Year's, Lunar New Year, where it's about coming together um, as a community and working together. Um, I think, um, he exemplified, Mr. Kim exemplified what it meant to give, so, thank you, Mr. President.
So again, members, if there's somebody that you love, don't think that you can wait till tomorrow to let them know that. If you love somebody, you need to let them know right now because the only thing that you can count on is this second, not the next second. So before we adjourn this council, it's my understanding that on item 1E we need to vote on reconsideration. Uh, please, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll. 1E. Reconsideration, let's-
Twelve ayes.
Okay, and we will continue that item for 30 days so it won't return till, what, March 16?
March 20th, sir. 16 is recess.
Okay, I see that. Okay, with that said, this, uh, council is adjourned.